We're ready.
Welcome to the Green River City Council special meeting on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, starting at six P. M. The purpose of these special meetings, and we'll probably have a few of them, and we're going to probably rename them the work sessions, just because that's what they really are. We've got to figure out exactly like when the best time is to get sort of the best overlap between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council. And when I discussed some things with the council over the past week, like one of the sort of concerns that kept popping up was, are we, you know, like a working commission or are we a voting commission? And so like what's like the difference there? And like, and the truth is that like when our bylaws, sort of you look at them, you're more of a hybrid than anything else, which creates a problem of how much volunteer work do you put towards drafting something and things like that? So I think that this gets a little bit more skin in the game on the council to sort of help with some of those, the working parts of your commission is getting things drafted, getting language sort of put together for you to look at and vote on ultimately. And I think that might alleviate some of the burden on the planning commission while also creating an atmosphere for more transparency about sort of the process of how we get to those ordinances and also creating an environment where people can be a little bit more involved and come in. So these working sessions, there's never going to be any voting during that. There might be some times where it's appropriate to maybe have like a presentation by a group that is requesting additional use or something like that could happen in those. But in in general, the main idea is to sort of just sort of get through some ideas here. So we specifically, the only agenda item for tonight is discussing planning and zoning concerns, which is pretty broad and vague. We're going to invite a public comment, but before we do that, I was going to see if either of the council members who are here wanted, if they have anything to discuss there.
The only thing at this point in time, just wait, it helps me go.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So in that case, do you have anything you want to discuss either? That you want to bring to attention before we sort of open the public comment?
No, no, I don't think I do.
Okay, the last person I'll ask is Tyler. Is there anything you wanted to bring up?
No, I'm just ready to respond to it.
Sounds good. Okay, in that case, we'll go ahead and open for public comment. This is, it's a work session, so it's pretty mild. So if you have anything that you want to discuss, we just ask for the record in the minutes that you state loudly what your name is and before you start your comment. I don't think I'm going to make anyone stand right there in the in the hot seat if they don't want it for today. We'll save those for city council meeting, public comments. But yeah, so the idea is here, some planning zoning concerns that you may have, if you want, if we want to, like especially like things that we feel like might need ordinance or resolution passing that we need to start drafting as a council and a staff. Anybody?
Well, I, my name is Christine Cheater.
Okay.
Like a secret paper with an Y again.
Gotcha.
That's a tricky one.
Thank you.
You have your Latino eyes on it. I was just, because it was tabled by the zoning commission or
Sure.
A couple of times, I was wondering what their concerns are and why they were looking into it further. And what I'm talking about, I guess, is the zoning process, the industry.
Number four. Three. Last week's.
Oh, okay, for the A one lithium? Yeah, sure.
Not not just the lithium, just the whole, that whole thing. They were, they tabled it.
Yeah.
And then, then it was not tabled.
Yes.
So that's what, how we're wondering how that happened so fast. Because I actually heard one of the members, I'm sorry, it was Chris's turn.
That's okay.
Yeah, do you want to say your names now?
I'm standing on.
Kathy, I don't want to.
Yeah, and I just heard her saying something about that they hadn't. I don't even know how to put it.
It, no, that's okay.
Well, there are members of the planning commission.
Do you want to speak on this, Ryan?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for you.
It's a timely manner, because they tabled it and they wanted to do some research. And it didn't seem like, as far as I was concerned, even because I'd been at that of a meeting, that they had enough time to do anything in a timely manner yet.
Sure.
They, they just, only a few weeks had passed.
Gotcha.
And and I heard one of the members ask, what is a timely man- manner?
Sure.
And that's why I'm sitting here, because I was like, oh, yeah, what is a timely manner?
It's a kind of suggestion.
And I can, I can get into the legality of it in a second, but I'll let Steph speak first off. Steph, Congress, Board Chair, Commission Chair.
So I think some of what this room is right here stemmed from what happened in that. I had been with David and Tyler kind of prior to the council meeting and, you know, was aware of some of the questions that were happening. And I I think some of the work that was done and now the questions that came up of is the planning commission a working board or a voting board? You know, this was all drafted kind of after it got tabled by us multiple times. And that was something that coming to these guys and saying, we tabled it multiple times because we didn't even know where to start with this. This is a whole draft on extractive industry, drilling, different things like that. That was the research we wanted done that did get done. And that's what brought these questions now to the sort of employees and to the council is, you know, does planning commission do this, does David do this, does Tyler do this, does council do this? So basically, what would happen there was the learning process for us and now is becoming the question of a working board, a voting board, things like that. This is basically why it was tabled by us, just kind of a lack of information. Then we expressed that to them and and they felt like it was something the council could help get voted on faster if they helped compile this information.
Okay.
And that's where we're at now is figuring out some of these things and how everybody can be involved together rather than being two separate groups. Before, a lot would happen in planning commission and then we'd just go to council's table to be voted on. And, you know, hopefully we work more together so that this stuff happens kind of all in unison.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will say, I have a really boring and lawyer-y answer for you on what a timely manner is. Which, a timely manner is just, if the council wants to pick it up, they can deem that it was untimely. So if it gets tabled at all, if there's no recommendation, pretty much that that statute allows for the council to pick it up, take the untimely manner as a no recommendation and move forward and vote on it. Which, yeah, I, I mean, the idea that like it's not expressly defined is sort of wonky, but I'm sure that they're, the legislature thought that they were doing everyone a favor by making it a little bit more flexible. Yeah, and I didn't necessarily love the wording untimely, but that's the wording in the statute. We got advised by our attorney to make sure that we put in the exact wording of the statute when we made the agenda item. It's okay. Yeah, I think in general, so I mean, because, yeah, I think specifically Tammy talked about it in the meeting, like what's an untimely manner? And and that's a great question. And the answer is sort of like, you know, like the old like Oliver Wendell Holmes idea of what's obscenity, I'll know it when I see it. And so in this situation, it's just when the council wants to pick up something off the table that has been tabled by the, that can be considered untimely. But yeah, there's no like, there's no like an automatic trigger point of like three months, six months, whatever. But yeah, so when the council decides they want to vote, that's what we, that's what we have to do legally is go through those channels.
May I, Christine Cheater?
Yes.
I mean, it sounds like the planning wants to find out more information. And that's what ought to happen before, it feels like that's what ought to happen before you make recommendations and say, oh, this is what Green River wants, representing the people, when, when you're supposed to, you ought to get more information.
Are they satisfied with the amount of information they were given on, on what their research that they wanted to do?
The council?
The, the zoning, because they tabled it in the first place so they could find out.
Yeah.
The research.
I don't want to speak for anyone, but I do think that a recommendation would have been more likely to come forward if that ordinance had been asked planning and zoning the previous time. So it likely wouldn't have been tabled, there would have been a recommendation, maybe some red lines. That's my guess, based on conversations I've had, but there's planning and zoning commission members here that they'd like to speak to. Yeah.
That was, I think, wasn't lining up. We didn't have information and it's on us and it's on the council board. Because we didn't communicate each other not well at all. So that's part of what this is about tonight, we're going to start having better communication. But I, I wasn't comfortable with some of this stuff because I didn't know. And I stayed at the meeting and I'm, I'm not the guy to be making this decision right now without more information.
Yeah.
Because I don't know enough about this process. So after that meeting, Steph challenged all of us. She wanted for the next meeting, she wanted everybody, she assigned all of us doing research. So I started doing research. And I was doing a lot of reading and I spent hours and hours and hours reading on my own. And learned quite a bit and then had a meeting with Tyler and David. And okay, we expressed concerns and I brought up some stuff I had found. Actually, just one thing that I thought we could probably borrow from, it was really good, it was an ordinance in Woods Cross. Where I was to look for the ordinance, because I thought, what better place to look than a town that is an industrial park? Oh, come on. Woods Cross is an industrial park.
Yes, that's right.
Most essential. So I looked there and I found stuff and David's got a copy of that. And I noticed that and then it was like a couple of days later when I was told council was taking this into it. So apparently, you know, the mayor looked at it, council looked at it. We'd had it in two meetings and we had tabled it both times. And the council figured that we were dragging our feet, it wasn't a lot of communication, it wasn't dragging our feet trying to prevent it. It was a desire to get it right.
That's what.
And and really, we could have sent something up to the council and just pushed it off to them anyway because we're not a rulemaking body in the planning commission. In this regard, we are an advisory committee. Now, there are some stuff where we, like the mayor said, we're kind of a hybrid. We do make some decisions and we have that authority. But in this situation, all we were is just a body. We say, this is what we think works, these are our ideas and our thoughts, and this is what we passed on. We advise the council to do, the council takes that and they can either do it or scrap it and do their own thing or whatever at the end.
Yeah.
That's pretty much some issue.
I think that's a pretty fair estimation, yeah. And I think, so part of the idea behind these, any sort of work session that we're going to have, like council, commission, hybrid, whatever it wants to be, like in fact, I would sort of like going forward, like to just pull out those tables or whatever and have everyone sort of sitting around the same thing and then we, so we can discuss and hopefully we can get your input on any of the drafting and things that we're doing, like what, like we can hear those concerns sort of live as they come up. Instead of, like you said, like there's some miscommunication that definitely happened in between the first meeting you guys had and then when we voted on it last week. And so this, these will sort of like help keep that steam rolling if there needs to be. It doesn't mean that we need to have them every single month if there's nothing to discuss. We can always just sort of like, you know, I can bring them once there's something, I guess. I, I think that that, I, I think more work sessions are usually, especially like with cities that start growing, they're, they're kind of a necessity to make sure that everyone's tapped in and on the same page. Doesn't mean that everyone has to agree and that everyone has to vote the same, just means that everyone sort of has all the same information. And so I feel like there was, there was definitely like a lack of communication to the planning and zoning commission on all of the information that was available. And and we, we could have done a better job of that. And even the example of, you know, having something for them to look at already that they can kind of redline, figure out whether it's that Woods Cross statute or, I think there was some, like, some things floating around that were Houston's, like Houston's complete lack of zoning overlay discussion. But like any of those sort of things that we could push to you so you have an idea and be like, oh, yeah, we like this, like this, don't like this. This is what we recommend. And then, like you said, the council can ultimately go, we ate all your recommendations, we're switching them up to this. Or we like these three, we want to add one, whatever. And that's sort of the process of a lot of these things when legislation's coming into being. So the more input we have, especially with planning and zoning, I think it's better. The more work that we can kind of do together to get there. I think that's where some of that hybrid will come into play too, because I know you, I mean, I don't know about you, but Tyler, but when we get into a city council meeting or anything where there's like a lot of work to be done and some guys, you guys have a pretty big agenda sometimes with planning and zoning, I don't want it necessarily to have to be taken up with forty-five minutes of the same sort of like circular reasoning that happens sometimes.
We don't want it to happen in real time in council meeting either.
Right, that's true too. We want to have.
Too much can fall through the cracks and too many mistakes can be made if you try to do it on the fly.
Yeah, and so we want there to be a lot of these, or not a lot, but like at least.
Well, when it's necessary.
Yeah, when it's necessary to make sure that we're having a meeting that is just discussion to sort of figure out like and parse out some of the ideas, so.
Is there a limit on how many council members can attend our meeting because they're on our?
Technically, no. So the, I, I feel like you're thinking of like the forum rule or whatever. All of, all of the planning, all of the city council members can attend your meetings as long as it doesn't become a pretext for them making a decision at the next meetings or something like that. Like, does that make sense? So as long as you guys are conducting it and it's still your meeting, they can even make public comment as citizens or or even as council members technically, and that's fine. But if it looks like it was a pretext to just make a vote on something else, that's where the issue comes, which is pretty, that, that's probably not going to happen in planning and zoning. So they don't need to, and technically, it's also a publicly posted meeting, so there's some of those things go away too.
Because I just want to let the council know, so we switched around the way we were doing, before we, anything that needed public, public hearing to it, we would vote first. It would come to public hearing, council, how we had done, I don't know, four months ago or something.
Yeah.
And then you guys would vote. So we almost felt like we were voting on the recommendation on it with no public comment. So we've switched it now where the public hearing comes before we vote. So just making you guys aware of that, the public hearings are now at our meeting at the start of them. And that's where you guys will get that public comment.
Right.
It'll come to us and then we'll recommend it to you, but you're kind of losing that public comment in your meeting, it's now in ours, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Gayness Alina, and I have a question for each one of the council members. How much information or how much study did you personally put into writing up this ordinance that was point number five that came up in the, in your state council meeting?
Any quick? So I put in some, yeah, that it was the, I should add my last name, that was the.
Let me get there, I'm almost there.
Do you want me to read what it says?
Sure.
Discuss approved deny ordinance two thousand and twenty-four zero one allowing mineral processing and extractive industry in the city's industrial zones I one, I two, I three, which includes solids, solids such as coal and ores, liquids such as crude petroleum, petroleum, salt brine and gases such as natural gas and setting conditional use criteria for extractive energy, or extractive industry, excuse me.
Sure. So my personal involvement, I've had, I had discussions with every council member. I would be within itself, had discussions with Tyler and David. And so like, I don't know if I could put like an hour like time on it, like and then also research myself. So I'm guessing somewhere in the realm of like, you know, ten to twelve hours of personal research and and discussions on, on the end. Would be my guess of what I sort of like put into it. I think Tyler and David did a little bit more than that, I would guess, on, because they did the primary portion of the drafting. And then that got sort of, and I know that that happened because of concerns that council member had already had with discussions that they've had with other people outside of me. So, so I know that there was definitely some work that was going into this on a council level and at my level. But I, I can't speak for them in terms of their own research.
As far as for me, I mean, I didn't draft it. I mean, that's obvious, because it's not really my job, but I did look over it, I, I did read over it. And I gave input on it. I was aware of everything in it. And I, I don't know for sure how much time, but I did discuss with other council members and with the mayor. And I text back and forth and email back and forth with Tyler. That's, you know.
That's pretty much where I'm at as well. Talked to Tyler, talked to David, talked to the mayor, talked to other council members, read the script. And I don't know how much more we can do than that. That's what, I've read what was provided for us.
Yeah, I was kind of the same way and I guess my personal feelings on it is, is an ordinance like this doesn't say we're going to allow any and every company that falls under them things to come in and set up shop here because they're stuck and have to go through all the other permitting processes, everything else, all the other regulations to be looked at individually. But an overall ordinance that says this could be allowed, I, I just, myself, I didn't see a reason that we, we shouldn't be open to look at those businesses by just having a blanket zoning ordinance that says we can't even explore that.
Part of what we tried to do in commission was take out any context of what we already know is trying to come. This was written and just letting, and I kept playing devil's advocate and that's maybe what complicated us in, you know, breaking down some of the the conditional use regulations. Because I was like, what if I come in next month and I have a giant magnet and I want to suck things out of the ground? You know, making people think of more things because I wanted to take it out of the context of what we already know is coming or wanting to come and what could come. And that's part of writing these conditions is, you know, looking at just generalized, nobody can say they're just against mining because everybody's wearing some sort of jewelry or anything, so.
It comes from the air.
Taking, taking the context of what the opinions we have, because that's what's coming up tonight, is the opinion of one specific one we're going to look at, but this was just generalized drafting.
And that part of the problem in the commission meeting too was, part of the commission wanted to generalize kind of like this is. And then there was some other discussion in there about being specific. And, you know, naming the specific things and getting really deep into the weeds with it. And and I wasn't comfortable with that at all. And stated as much, I'm not comfortable getting into the weeds with this. If I had to vote on it right now with what little bit I don't know, I'm going to say no in I one, conditional I two, permitted I three. And that, that was, that probably pervaded from the meeting if you want to hold it at this time.
I think that's pretty good. That's why I.
I think, Gayness, can you leave us again? In the land use matrix, that's the zoning book, you know, even that in zone, my difficulty is, you know, it was presented as conditional, conditional, conditional in all three zones. And petroleum, even in the land use matrix, that they say it's not permitted in industrial one or industrial two, but it's conditional in zone three. And I think that, you know, if you read through what industrial one is and industrial two is and what is, you know, what's allowed within the zoning of the state of Utah land, things that they give you, I think that that's reasonable. And and for me, the difficulty is, as a council, you're expecting the zoning and others that really appeared in the meeting on Tuesday, that conditional, you know, you set conditional all three, zoning zone one, zone two, zone three, and then there was a proposal to immediately say, well, no, permitted in, in I three. And to me, that was a conflict of interest for the person that made the proposal because the person that made the proposal is working in, in that industry in zone three. So if the city council wants zoning and the citizens of Green River to believe that the council actually has the best interests of the city and the citizens involved, I think that there needs to be a little bit more wisdom in how those are approached in public meetings and how that comes over to the citizens. Because it came over as a real ramrod thing. It wouldn't have come over that way if you would have just waited till Tuesday, which is today, and listened to the zoning committee and have them go through their process. And then you could have had your own special meeting and then voted, well, we want to, based upon what the zoning commission recommended, we want to say that it's not conditional in industrial three, we want it to be permitted. To me, that would have come off a lot less of a vested interest of a particular council member and how the city citizens are supposed to trust the council in the decisions that they make. That's just, you know, to me, it came off that way a lot. And I, I don't know how it came off to other people. But if you want people to serve in zoning, I think you need to respect, you know, Tammy and the others that were there saying, this really is really sort of, you know, when they're asking, why did you think this? In all honesty, you know, things usually move pretty slowly. And what would it have taken to just wait one more week and fully listen to the zoning and respect the people who, for their part, wanted to inform themselves and be informed to all of the issues involved, both general and specific to the issues that they were trying to deal with? That's just, you know, I think it's something that needs to be handled with a little more fairness.
Sure. Yeah, no, I think, I think that's like, that's part of what this is designed to do, is to make sure that like there's enough communication between the commission who like, it, it's tough to get people to volunteer for anything and I'm really, really like happy with the appointees that we have in planning and zoning and I feel like they take their job seriously and they do a good job. And so I think this sort of like helps move that needle and keep things moving when it needs to. And it also helps like us to start brainstorming for the future now and like try to figure out, is there some sort of industry that we want to attract that maybe we would prefer or whatever it happens to be? Is there like some preferred industry that we don't have good zoning for right now that we could maybe like set up something where we could figure that out? And I, I think like hopefully that's what these meetings will sort of instill. And and also better communication between the planning and zoning and the council. I, I think we're, I, I think that overall, like the last meeting was a good lesson learned in, in terms of, yeah, how does this come off to the city citizens, how does it come off to the planning and zoning committee themselves? And and how do we make sure that we're like sort of, you know, keeping what we, doing what we can to keep progress and also doing what we can to make sure that as many improvements are heard as possible? Because that's the difficult part within the city, yeah.
So added to that, I mean, in the last meeting, it was talked about why there weren't more people who would be on the ballot to want to be on the city council. And precisely what happened last week is sort of the reason why a lot of people, in my perspective, don't want to be on the city council, because I figure, well, it's
I will disagree with that.
Just the vested interest of who's on council. I mean, it comes off, I mean, you know.
No, 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 I can see the understanding.
I, I take, I take accept it, I got no vested interest in this whatsoever. With the exception of, I know that there's a bunch of people in this town that need decent paying jobs with health insurance, with benefits, with retirement packages, so we can keep families here.
Yep.
So I'm here for the citizens. I, I'm not going to make a dime off this, I have no, no dog in this fight other than the citizens in Green River. So for you to say that this is just based on somebody trying to get rich, I don't plan on getting rich on this.
No, I'm just saying, when I talk to people and ask them about the impression of state council, unfortunately, and I think that this is where it's helpful, to have these meetings, unfortunately, a lot of people's perception of state council is negative. That's all I'm saying. And it doesn't have to be. And that's why I hope that these kinds of things happen more often so that citizens can take an interest. Because, you know, I, I would appreciate the fact that what Mayor passed in the last meeting of how we communicate and maybe that information of how everybody can get documents or whatever to go out on the water bill so that people can be more informed, I mean, because that's new information to me.
Sure.
Just to clarify real quick, I spent more than ten hours studying and searching this. I have concerns about the mail extraction, but my concerns were answered several months ago. In my personal life, when I've dealt with state agencies and federal agencies, they are more than thorough. But they, well, they squashed a lot of my concerns I had because of how thorough they are. So I have faith in the, in the government and other federal agencies that will be overseeing this, that they will monitor and keep an eye on it. I'm sorry. See, also, one of the things too is that I am not an owner of high desert excavating, I am an employee. And according to the city attorney, if I do, if high desert if I do, if High Desert has worked with A-1, and I'm an employee for High Desert, there's no conflict there, if I was receiving a direct compensation from A-1 with, with my name on it, absolutely, but that is not the case.
Any other comments, any questions? Yeah.
I, I.
Louden Brown, what's your name, sorry.
I'm Louden Brown.
Okay.
Some of you know me, some of you don't. What, uh, how much background checking have you done on the company that wants to do this?
In terms of like, are you talking like, full-scale corporate espionage vetting?
No, I, yeah.
A lot of it goes in the past, a lot of it goes in the past history work.
Yeah.
Do they, do they go off and after they destroy a place, then move on to a new place, and go, I know our minds and that, people come in and renovate all that kind of stuff?
The boom, bust, boom, bust.
I think that's what she's getting at, is she wants to know what's their past history of.
They've been in the area for a while, they've been opening wells out in Yellow Cat area and down by Dead Horse Point, I believe, and taking samples from existing wells and trying to see if there's enough uranium there to pursue this, listen, excuse me, pursue this process, people's worth separating, that's what I'm saying, that's very fair. And also, uh, they tried building a plant in Moab, and obviously, it didn't go over well, so, one of their people said, Green River's got some property, and they looked here, and they were much more willing, or they could see a, a better way to get accomplished for getting a plant established, and so, they're invested in the area, and they bought property in the area, and they seem like worth investigating, looking into, doing business with, you know, for my part.
As far as, um, like, they have, they're on the Australian Stock Exchange, I did, I did double check that when they made that claim, I was like, well, that's interesting, I'll go look at that, um, and they are, their parent company is on the Australian Stock Exchange, um, the, uh, I talked to some people from Moab who've had some dealings with them, and just because I have some, um, I have some ins with the commission, and, and so I, I spoke to a few of them, and it's, in general, they're polite, and the paperwork comes in on time, and they, they pay the things that they need to, and those types of things, uh, as far as like, what sort of, like, how they leave a place, um, I don't know of any places where they've left yet, I know that they have a, they have some sort of business holdings in Florida, um, they're still ongoing, and they are still working on what they're doing in Grand, even if they can't make the plant pencil for whatever reason, they're, they're still, uh, working with Grand County, uh, and, and trying to employ people in Grand County, so, um, they, and those are all people that they've been working with for years before us, so, I have not been able to get a hold of that.
I mean, but looking at, you know, we're talking about these guys, look at their conditional use permit, I think it's forty-eight pages.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, okay.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, double sign, yeah, because I, I looked at printing the whole thing out, and I was like, yeah, I'm gonna run out of ink before I get this printed, and stuff, so yeah, um, but, then we've got estimates on the reclamation of every well site, of what it's gonna cost and what it's gonna entail, that's how thorough they've been with this conditional use permit application, I mean, it is very thorough, I would venture to say the city's probably never seen one that is in depth to the scale of what this is, um, and also, the one that come put the presentation on, he's in Emery County, boy born, born, raised in Emery County, he's local, uh, it's not somebody from who knows where and stuff, I mean, I, I know of his family, and, and they're here, and I, I think he is genuine when he says he has the interest of Emery County at heart, in the local area, and stuff, I mean, yeah, we're, we're taking a gamble, but, we, we take a gamble with a lot of different companies.
I think one thing of, with our oil lines and that department out here, it's a lot different than what it was when they were doing the uranium booms back in the day on recovery, and I think that's what's got a lot of people, you know, what's gonna happen, if you've got a problem, you can contact them, and they'll come down and investigate what's going on, if there's a problem, they'll step in, you can shut it down, I mean, it's not like.
Dogma and stuff like that is very in-depth on what they allow and what they don't allow, and what's gonna have to transpire when somebody leaves an area, I mean, a personal experience on the book list, there's a lot of oil pads up there that, that've come in, they've had a, a, a well pad set on, when they leave that, they can't leave it like it is, I'll bet, sit, I'll bet the Division of Oil, Gas and Mining, leave that as a campsite, a flat spot, plant grass, great place, they're, they can't even allow for that, because their stipulations say it will be taken back to the closest to natural state that's possible, and stuff, and they won't even allow to leave a, a, a nice flat spot for somebody to camp on, because it's prohibited through their own policies.
Or throw up in a horse trailer.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've asked them, why do you tear it up so bad, because they don't want anybody going back in there and trying to camp there, and trust me, I've made plenty of phone calls trying to get them to, to leave it decent, and I, I imagine Kent can agree that there's places up there that would be very nice to have, and, or very much needed.
I've probably called some people too, got to.
So, so they are thorough, you know, I mean, Green River, w- we've got an interest in it, but we've also got a lot of state and federal agencies that have a lot more in-depth and stuff, and, you know, I, I guess maybe, I, I'm, I'm guilty of saying, or guilty or not, but I'm, I'm saying I'm trusting these agencies that are experts in this, that have people that understand what's going on, and stuff, for them to, to make sure things are done right, and if we start seeing something as a council, and as city employees here, that we don't feel comfortable with, there are phone call away to, to get those questions answered and, and get some teeth behind, let's making sure they're abiding by what they need to.
Dana Salinas. We have business owners leave things in a worse state.
Absolutely.
Somebody advised by agency will leave.
Yeah, yeah.
To your point with the, specifically the lithium, direct lithium extraction, I have been on the phone with Bart Peddell, who's Deputy Director of Dogma, and talked to him quite extensively, the difficulty with this direct lithium extraction is that it has never been done in the state of Utah before, there are no permitted, no one in the US has done it, and because this is so deep, normally minerals come, you know, they're like potash, and it's under a different category, minerals and mining, whatever, but this lithium is not taken out that way, so, they are having difficulty knowing, because it involves three agencies, Division of Oil, Gas and Mining, Division of Water Quality, and Water Rates, and they have not traditionally had to work together on any permitting, because this is something that involves all three, they all three go through their own permitting thing, and so that's why it, it becomes something that is much bigger than just one or the other, because it involves all of those three agencies, so it is something that is gonna be very interesting to see in the final outcome what happens, I mean, he specifically says, and others are saying, Utah needs to come up with some sort of legislation, because there is nothing that pertains particularly to this, because it is something new and unique, and that's why Green River needs to really inform itself, pros, cons, be informed as to what is going on, the other place in the country is the Snackover Foundation, uh, Formation, in foundation, in Arkansas, Louisiana, and they, they are at this particular moment harvesting or getting bromine, bromine, out of their salt brine, and they're also looking to do lithium, but that's a, that's something, you know, they're already doing it, and so in some ways, because things seem to be pushed, um, forward very quickly in some ways, it's like, well, take, we just step back a little bit and inform ourselves back to the vetting of the company, the May is an Australian traded company, but there's only six US investors, and they hold a little bit of money, but there's three Chinese, and they hold a lot of the money, and they, in their own documents, have said any lithium is going to Europe and to Asian markets, and so, you know, there's just lots of concerns as to should Utah's resources be pushed into Chinese and European markets, and can Utah do better with developing our own coal and oil, because Utah is one of the five producing oil states in the country, and so I think we can, you know, work towards those kinds of things, developing the resources that we know and have, that have done Utah good.
Sounds like a perfect opportunity to put up a pilot plant, and run it for six months a year, and see if it's gonna work, see if they can make it.
I think it would be great to go down where there's oil wells, where you're already bringing up the salt brine, go next one oil well, where you're bringing up the salt brine, where they already have an injection well, to, you put your plant right there and see what it is, because the salt water comes up with the oil.
Well, they're so confident, that they bought land before they did that, so they must, I think they have a corner on the market, so, if it doesn't, they walk away from you, yeah.
And we also had concerns brought up by people that says, you know, we're concerned about how much is getting trucked in and this and that, they're right on the railroad, railroads usually got a pretty good history of safety and stuff with bringing chemicals in and out, they're based right on the rail line and stuff, we're not gonna have trucks running through town, because that was a concern we had people, oh, I don't wanna see a bunch of tanker trucks come through all the subdivisions in town, in and out of town, well, you know, they're here every day, just nobody pays attention, what's drives through this town every day, but.
Sit down and.
But, but I mean, it, it's a place, you know, you're on the rail, you're able to get your products in, get your products out on the rail, that's something you're not gonna have out here in the middle of the desert.
It's not that shit.
Well.
It's their fault.
As far as people's concern, having worked for Department of Natural Resources for one or two years in a different field, there is a central headquarters called Director of Natural Resources, he's over water, mines, and the whole thing, he's got concern, and everybody's kind of acting all this, his, uh, he's the conductor, he can have them get together in a working group, and put things together, the other one is your state senator over here, that's, that's the level that needs to go, what they're doing here, now, don't worry, I'm not one of the other, I'm just saying, these are the things how it's addressed, if you've got concerns, they can't do much over well, if you're looking at, they've got something big going on right now, I don't know if I've heard what's going on with the law enforcement, that's all gonna be a whole stuff of things, so best be everybody's turning it down to the red, get the legislation applied, but what needs to be done is, if you've got concerns, I, I get all the teachers, and I would get all the Director of Natural Resources, if they're, if they're having problems with that three coming together, how are we gonna put one permit together, they gotta meet the three requirements under those three departments, and if there's a problem, they have to come up with a new rule, and that's got to go through legislators, or depend on the level, so that's where that has to go, there's not much they can do, they can look at and say what's good, and they can look at the history of recovery, um, that, you know, some of it might have to go to somebody else, but in the state level, for natural resources, you gotta, right, oh, it is the Director of Natural Resources, you go to, if you have any information, you see, you see something going on with this problem, the contractor, he's getting the three agencies together and start waving his baton, because I've, I've seen more than once, where they had to take it, pull the different agencies, you have them come up with a different rule, go up to legislators, and present, and get a, somebody to put forward the bill, sometimes it requires more study, that's where that kind of needs to be addressed.
All right, Kristine, I always think, I'd gang sort of talk about that a little bit, about the Australian company, and just like, well, uh, why, Austin, what can we, I mean, li- if lithium is the new oil, so to speak, right, or at least partly, right, it's like, can we veto or open our arms to American companies?
So, um, I'll, just to speak to that really quickly, like, um, since I've been mayor, I've gone to the Silicon Slopes Conference, I've gone to the Utah Department of Tourism Conference, I've gone to Adobe, Facebook, um, several other American companies, uh, like, I've met in their offices, I've asked them, what's the sort of like, is, is there any sort of interest in building something in Green River, and there usually is, like, at least they're, or at the very least, they're willing to placate me, because I have mayor in front of my name, and so they're like, okay, sure, we'll talk to you, um, and, uh, but none of them are doing anything yet, and so, there is an element of this where, you know, I know that like, I, I, I don't necessarily understand this concern entirely, that it's an Australian company, um, but there aren't any American companies that have offered to buy land and to create an industry, as of yet.
As of yet.
I know, so, my point is, is should, should the city wait indefinitely until an American company falls into our hands and tells us they wanna do it?
It's, I believe, I believe it's Mississippi information, I don't know if it's like newly understood that it has the lithium or whatnot, I think.
Sure.
But it's, it seems it's known, I mean, if Australia's coming over here and buying land, you know, they're like, oh, ooh, we're gonna make money here.
Okay.
And it, it just feels, it, it feels like to jump into this is bad for you.
Okay.
To me.
Well, I kinda think an Australian company willing to come to Green River, spend their money here, is better than, uh, than, than an American company going to Australia and spending our money there.
If you start looking at this stock exchange for a lot of American named companies now, you're gonna be surprised who actually almost owns that company overseas.
Yeah, a lot of multinationals, a lot of multinationals.
I mean, and, and, you know, it sounds like Arkansas took a chance, and it sounds like it's panning out in certain ways, and they're trying to do it, I, I, you know, somebody's got it, somebody's got to take and, and say, yeah, let, let's try something new, you know what, I wish lithium would go away, I wish that we didn't have to be worrying about electric cars and all that, but guess what, my wishes are not coming true, we're getting it force fed to us, and unfortunately, the demographic that keeps saying we gotta have electric cars and all this, just thinks you plug into the wall, and the power miraculously appears, and the batteries just somehow fall out of the sky and land in your car, but they don't, so.
The law is making them rethink it, nobody's out charging their car when it's twenty below.
Well.
Then, then don't charge.
Or one second pull truck.
Yeah.
That is stuff that's always got general, that he's charging this car.
Right, 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 right.
All right, any other comments? Okay, uh, then I would say that we'll adjourn at six forty-eight for this work session, and that'll give you guys time to go, I don't know, it's.
Steph.
Smoke if you got it, I guess, or.
Well, one quick question I have for Steph, is can us as the council get a copy of that list of what your concerns were, and who was kind of taking those and running with them, so we can kind of help our, inform ourselves where you're at with that?
There was. Certain things also did come up, just not knowing what's going on with it, and it wasn't so much concerned with specific things.